School board meeting is called to order. Would you please stand for a moment of silence? All in by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Chair Seaver.
Here.
Vice Chair Spall.
Present.
Mrs. Stevens.
Mrs. Brezja.
Present.
Ms. Brown.
Present.
Ms. Mile.
Present.
Dr. Jones.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a forum.
Thank you, Mrs. Garza. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or additions to the agenda to see?
No, ma'am.
And then a motion for the public meeting agenda approval.
Oh, great. Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Spall, second by Mrs. Brezja, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approve the public meeting agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries six zero. Okay. We have a few announcements. Number one being that we are live streaming.
Right?
Yes, ma'am.
And these microphones pick up any little sound. Any little sound. Any side conversations, any conversations in the back. Everything. So, just to let you know about that. Also, I'm going to be passing this around throughout the year. Our schools will be presenting to city council. And traditionally, we've introduced the principal. Do you guys still want to do that?
I'll let you.
Have some FaceTime with city council?
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so we'll pass that around. Seems like everybody's into that. And then, just a reminder that on 10/23, we have a work session held. Or we're holding that date for a work session. And that will be to go over superintendent's goals for this school year. So we won't have this kind of work session. We will have a work session on superintendent goals. Yes, and it will be closed.
Can you do the date? I can't. I'm sorry, Chair.
It is over 23rd. Is that at 5:00 PM?
Yes. And I'll have to hear that there.
Okay. You can send me notes if you want. We're going to be talking more about that process a little bit later tonight.
Will that be only one session of that? Or could it spill into another one if we need to?
I hope it doesn't.
Okay.
It shouldn't. I'll say that. It shouldn't.
I will now be here on the 23rd. Can I participate via Zoom? If necessary?
Yeah. I'll go line it up.
Okay, thank you.
And then, let's see. Mrs. Spall, did you have a question about that superintendent's goals or something?
I just wanted to announce that there is a VSBA Supervisor Superintendent Workshop, Evaluation Workshop on September 30th. So there is time to still both register and attend. I think I've been twice.
Is it all day or?
Uh, not a month or one.
I think it's like a nine to two.
It's nine and a half. I think it is like 12. I'll register. I'll tell you later.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
I can forward that information to you guys if you need.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements? Okay. Going into our main work session agenda. This part of our work session is set aside for board members to introduce ideas and proposed topics. It allows us to gauge interest, decide what can be resolved today, and what may need to move forward to a regular meeting for discussion. We have 17 business items to consider. Some may be ongoing business items and some may be newly proposed. To keep us on track, please use the graphic organizer when presenting your new business. State the topic. Note if it's tied to student outcomes. Explain its significance and share your ideal outcome for today. So, let's stay focused, concise, and on topic so that we can make the most of this time together. And our first item A is discussion of the grading policy. And I'll go to Ms. Brown, who brought this forward.
Yes, so, um, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I was proposing that the grading policy be referred to to the Policy Committee for revisions so that we can narrow down our role, which should be limited to adopting the policy, but not dictating the regulation. Meaning how it is reviewed and implemented, refined. That would be best. It will serve all of us, including the community, to delegate that to the experts in the field, which is the superintendent in his cabinet, and the teachers who are actually using it and can give direct feedback to the superintendent. It will also eliminate all of the political noise that's going on. And it will keep us from nursing or advocating implicitly or explicitly any hate constructs about our students and our teachers, or any biases about our students and our teachers. I think as a collective, we need to take a stance on this and just do what is right, which is govern and let the superintendent do the regulation. So my ideal outcome would be for us to send this back to the Policy Committee, which I think that's appropriate committee, to revise the policy and then bring it back to, as an action item, to the collective so that we can vote on it.
Yeah, no need to coordinate it for the regulation. Okay, can I have a show of hands for appetite for what Ms. Brown just mentioned?
Okay.
Where's your hand at? Okay, great. Unanimous. Okay, we will do that. Thank you for bringing that forward, Ms. Brown. Item B, proposed business. MCPS School Board priorities for the 25-26 school year. This is something that we traditionally do at our retreat. We did start it there. It's been ongoing discussion. Ms. Loesch has helped us through some of the brainstorming activities and in documenting what we think are priorities. What's important about this is we serve together as a board. It's good to have documentation of what we actually prioritize. And the preliminary one was done. And I guess I will ask for comments on these priorities. Mrs. Loesch, did you want to say anything? Okay. We're looking at the FY 25-26. We have number one is strategic plan. We have number two is stakeholder engagement. And we have a blank for the third. Mrs. Brezja.
So my feedback is kind of just overall on our approach. I think priorities is actually the wrong word to use for this because our one priority is... Oh, are you missing it?
Yeah, we don't have it.
I think...
It's an attachment on board.
Okay, okay.
I think I printed this.
Under item D.
Thank you.
The... Because the one priority is student academic success that we have in our strategic plan. So I think that what these really are are goals. Like what goals we want to teach. And not that... Yeah, I think we should be clear as to what the priority is. Priority is only one priority. And that's supporting our student academic success. And then what we are talking about here are goals. So it's just kind of a... I do think it's important, actually, to make that adjustment linguistically.
See, and I see it as for staff, these are special to the school board. So staff has a strategic plan. That's what they're working from. That is their priority. Our priority is to support that work. And maybe other things. So, I mean, the strategic plan cares, covers everything. But was there anything else you wanted to point like? Do you have it? Mrs. Spall?
So I'd like to find a way to do both of these things. I like to state a priority, but I definitely think that the next thing to do is to, you know, dig into it and at least know ourselves, you know, what the goals are that are really attached to this. I mean, when I look at this, it's really boiled down from a lot of priorities for us as individuals. And so, I mean, I feel represented here. Not a problem. My number three might be, you know, something. Or number two and, you know, is stakeholder engagement and vision. Storytelling, kind of both. But we do have, you know, the CIP and a facility study and a new strategic plan that we really need to work on in terms of vision. So I think that that's an important addition. You know, what we need to tell the world that we're working on. You know, I just don't... When it comes to the goals, you're right. You know, I mean, it is one, it is one goal. How are we going to get there? Well, we're going to have priorities. And we're going to, you know, work on those priorities. So I think it's all important. And I think it all needs to be spelled out. And we may need to practice this year and be ready for January, you know, to do both things because it is a late in the year.
Dr. Newman?
I said, can you tell me what you want number three to be?
Oh, vision? Vision work, vision planning, vision? Visions.
Stakeholders.
Well, stakeholder engagement is number two. So it could be stakeholder engagement and vision. You know, if we don't want to have three. I mean, I don't, I'm not looking to look it up. There are things that, you know, we're already going to do. We're already going to do a facility study. We're already going to do a CIP. We're already going to work collaboratively on a strategic plan. But I don't think that we should ever look those things personally.
Ms. Mile?
When I look, I thought when we mentioned this before, the last time we talked, that three was, we were thinking about doing equity and access for all and inclusion since those are very large things that we all agree on in both one and two. It's mentioned.
Yeah, it's already in our strategic plan.
Well, but taking it out of strategic plan and stakeholder engagement and making it into a three because...
Right, because it's listed twice.
Right, it's listed twice. And it's also one of the things that's major. If we look at what we've said, it's a lot of the bulk of what we all agree.
Okay.
Yeah, so that was just a suggestion and I thought, and then that way we can streamline those different items into that one three.
Anybody else?
So, number two is a no-brainer. And I think that's the easy one for us to do. I think it's really important, the storytelling, the equity and all those pieces. I think they fit nicely on the number two. Not necessarily we need to have a number three. This is a big elephant. And so, what we need to focus on, I caught your word that you say that you want to support. Our job and our role for this priority is to support the work that the superintendent is doing with the staff. And so, I just, and when I think of supporting in our priority, that means that it will be in the forefront so that we can make those decisions as far as budget or as far as time, et cetera, et cetera, right? So when I think about that, I guess for me, it would be part of another piece that I want to present. But I guess for sake of time right now, what does the superintendent and the staff believe is the more important? For me, right now, I think if we were to focus on something right now and get the more bang for our buck would be B under number one and C. Because those are the two pieces that we really need to be aligned and collectively push them forward. The rest of this stuff, we have tons of staff members that are already, we align. We already have talent that is looking to secure that workforce sustainability. We have things in place right now to make sure that we don't have overturn of assistant principals and principals so that we're able to retain them. And then equity A, we already can work through number two. So for me, it's like, can we just like hold on to the pieces that we really need to focus on to improve student outcomes, which is student achievement, academic excellence, attendance and engagement. And that belonging is one of the pieces that we need to figure out how to translate to kids and families because that will take care of our attendance.
So are you proposing making the list shorter?
And that's what I'm proposing because I think behavior, SEO, mental health is a priority. We have lots and lots. If we are thinking of governing, right? So what are our priorities that we're going to be telling people that we are, what's more important to us this year, right? It's for this year. What do we want to focus collectively on? And it has to be tangible.
I see number one. If I could reword it, I would put student outcomes. This is something we're already talking about in our work, even as we go through these work session items. That has got to be our focus. And how we do that is through the strategic plan.
And like I see, I mean, I see student achievement, student outcomes as being the most important thing to do. And then I think also equity and access for all is important. And then attendance, they have to be here for us to do that. I see those as like the top three to me. I think our storytelling is definitely important, but I think maybe the board doesn't have to. We don't have to be the ones that's actually in the forefront of that. But I do think that's important too. But I think student success for all, the student outcomes is the most important thing to do.
So we're thinking to make number one... I like the idea of changing number one to student outcomes.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
That's good.
Support strategic plan equal or just student outcomes?
Mrs. Spall?
I still would argue that I think that it is our job to set, you know, the direction of the ship and to talk about our vision for an extended future. You know, it is our job to do the now. But it is our job, and it is not exclusively our job, but a big part of our job is to say where we're headed and to set a course. So, I mean, I will shut up about it after this, but I have a strong commitment to vision because, you know, I don't know that we'd be talking about storytelling if we hadn't been talking about vision all along before a lot of people even got here. You know, I mean, we weren't in the same situation that we are right now three years ago or five years ago. So, I mean, some things that we're starting to take for granted, which is great, are things that weren't there in the beginning. So...
I agree. I think vision and sort of those four pieces are feasible. And we should be making them a priority because also we cannot put our heads in the sand. We have a very negative reception. And part of it is misinformation. And part of it is that we haven't been able to tell a story.
Right. In a consistent manner, so.
A cohesive way. You know, I mean, there are people out there that are saying good things. There are people out there that are saying bad things. But there's not an actual plan. And, you know, in my mind, I can envision what a plan could do for us. I'm not saying I know what the plan looks like, but I know what it could do if it was full body.
Alright, so what I... Ms. Mile?
Oh, I was also looking, I keep seeing talent and workforce sustainability. And I feel like it should be with our stakeholder engagement. You know, because that has a lot to do with strategic operations and the celebrations and recognition. So, right. So I was thinking that that should go maybe move underneath there. And then the student outcomes would be the behavior. It would be B, C, and D, or an A. It can still be A to A, B, C, and D. I don't know, I just keep seeing that. Yeah.
So what I have so far is number one. Everybody's okay with student outcomes, right?
Yeah.
And under that, we'll put support year for the strategic plan?
Yeah.
And then detail B and C or all of them?
Well, we're moving E.
Moving E, yeah. And...
I still consider E under number one. But...
Well, I see what Dana's saying also because I see the connection to what city council does as far as the races, as far as helping us do different things that will be, that will make us more attractive in the city for staff. So it's a stakeholder.
Because they have, there are stakeholders in our...
So it's... It's really kind of a rope.
Yeah. Many of these could go in many places. It can still be appropriate.
Yeah, but if we do a student outcomes, then it will fit nice, more appropriately under stakeholder engagement. And I'm okay with leaving A in there. I just think that right now, I guess I'm hyper-focused on our student achievement and attendance.
It's just one thing.
Yeah.
It's just one thing. And then number three, vision work. So we would be addressing this priority of vision work when we talk about the CIP, planning ahead. What's our next school? We're going to need to rebuild, that type of thing.
So that would be number three?
It would be. I have vision work as the title for number three. Do you guys like vision planning, vision work? What do you like?
I like vision work.
Vision work.
Okay. And under that, I have CIP, facility study, and strategic planning for the next
Five years? Yeah.
And I think we're going to hear more about facility planning.
Okay. Alright, so are we good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's move on. Item C is our legislative priorities. And Mrs. Stevens sent us a template to use, and we need to turn those into ALBA tonight.
Sure.
We can do that.
Sure.
Do you guys want to have the priorities? ALBA can reformat it. And do you want to officially approve it at our next school board meeting so that we can present at the joint meeting? Are you okay doing it through email? I mean, it's really primarily for us.
Right. I mean, there's no harm in putting it on the content agenda, right?
That's what we dated.
Okay, let's do... Is that alright?
Look at it via email?
No, we have to check it out.
Or docs?
Well, I mean, we need to... Okay. So we won't see the emails and all that?
Alright. Alright, legislative priorities. Anybody have some? I did not take a picture.
I didn't take a picture.
Also, Mrs. Spall and I will be attending the PSLN meetings with the regional group in October. There's two meetings, and they're going to be talking about legislative priorities then too. So I did tell Mrs. Stevens that, of course, we'll pass along everything to the whole board, but that it's coming. It might be late. When do we need to have those approved, ALBA? I'm sorry. Legislative priorities?
Well, we have the meeting, the joint meeting, November 6. It has been a legislative breakfast.
Oh, okay. November 6.
So they need to be able to formulate something that's fancy.
Yeah. So when Mrs. Stevens summarizes everything, she can submit that to staff for input. And then we can have it on our discussion agenda, first meeting in October, and then the action agenda, second meeting in October. Because we have... Is that at November 6?
Yeah, we won't have an other meeting.
Something like that. Okay. Alright. If anybody else has anything to be considered for legislative priorities, we need to get those into Mrs. Stevens.
Any time is needed to, we don't have it ready. We can always wait second meeting November 20.
Okay. Sounds good. Item D, discussion on school presentation format. So this is when schools will present to us. We need to decide, do we want all schools to present to us or just certain schools to present to us? And what we would like them to present to us. Do you want all schools? Do you want some schools?
Do we have enough meetings in a year to do all schools?
Yeah, I think all schools is a little unreasonable. I think in the past, it has been one from each level, right? Us more, that's intermediate, than one of the elementary. And I would be... Or two elementary.
I like that idea.
Can you give me more context? Like, what? Why do we have this to begin with? We already have the schools presenting to the council, and we're there.
Yeah, it's a little different. So you were asking earlier about data from like SOL data, vowels and all that data. They can take their data and present to us saying, this is what happened in the spring of last year. This is what we're doing to address it. And this is what the results moves in so far. So this is one of those times where we readdress the data.
And the performance framework, that will be out at a point.
Yeah.
How that interacts.
Maybe that's when we just...
Right, well, it is kind of hard because it's like if we pick an elementary school now to do it, and then it turns out we pick one that is with distinction, but one of them is off track. And we picked it, you know, like, you know, we might need to wait until we have the performance framework to really decide.
Yeah, because the topics, if, we're going to have to go back to the priorities. So if the topic is student achievement and attendance, it will have to be on one of these things. This is what we say is a priority this year. Do we want them to, do we pick the topics that we want them to present? Or are they just...
Well, what we could do is we could follow what we did last year. And then when we get more information, if we need to change it up, then we can do that.
I don't like the format last year.
What did we do last year? Yeah, because we were here.
Can you bring up ALBA from the, let's see, what meeting is this from? I looked at the Osborne one.
They did attendance. I remember she did.
There were no numbers in this presentation. It was just lots of October 22nd, 2024. They split it up by the performance indicators, which are going away now as a thing. We're under the new school frame, under the new performance framework. And a lot of words, not a lot of data. Find it as valuable as previous versions, which were more data-centric with, you know, graphs and things.
Mr. Spall?
So, I did have a question. So I guess if I had a vote, I would say all schools. And I was going to ask if ALBA would be included in that. So if we're not headed in the direction of all schools, then I'll kind of reformulate what I'm thinking or what we're going to really ask for.
We don't have any information on ALBA.
Okay.
Yes, for us.
So not until the end of the year at all?
I just like to work backwards. Like, what is it that we perceive? Actually, thank you, Chair, for always pushing me to use this little dandy, dandy. What is the ideal outcome of these presentations? What are we searching for? Or what is it going to support? I think if I'm asked to come to present to a group of people as an educator, I need to know the purpose so that I can make it meaningful.
It's really to support the board in our work.
So we have...
So like, Dr. Newman asked me, what do you guys want to see in these school reports? And now I'm asking you.
I want to see, for me this year, I want to see attendance. I want to see that those reports from preschool all the way to high school.
I would like to know how certain things are conducted, like how many CLTs they're having every week. Just things that are tied to student outcome. Like, how many ESL teachers do you have? How many ESL students do you have? Like, things like that. To me, having those data points help us understand the real bones of the school and why maybe this is the reason why this, or this is the reason why that. So, like, knowing how many, and that's one of the questions I've asked though. How many teachers do you have? And, you know, how many teachers have 30-plus years? And some have 10 years, some have five. Just having more of a, like, purview of the school because we don't know these things.
Yeah, but I don't want to get in the position where we are evaluating teachers and we, as a school board, are saying this is what's wrong. That's the superintendent's role.
But it's just to give us an idea of what, because a lot of times what happens is people make judgment calls, and they don't know what that school is, or what is behind those, those curtains. And so this is more of a, more of a transparent thing. To me, it's more transparency than anything else.
Ms. Spall?
See, for me, that's a very informational, one-page handout for every school that we can create very quickly, for all of us to have. It, it may already exist. I, you know, I, I look at those parts, and when I speak to principals, I get, that doesn't. So for me, again, you know, I, I'm gonna bring you all back to that balcony view, like, what is it that we want? And I think attendance is one of those issues that we really need to figure out.
Right.
But.
So, I can tell you, I, I think I hear you, I think I'm picking up what you're putting down. So we usually do get attendance separately. As a, as a, as a presentation. Yeah, we got one in the, yeah, we got one halfway through the school year, yeah, we get them. Either, yeah, we, we get attendance for the division, as like a separate thing. What we're talking about right now is, you know, we got our division, you know, overall division presentation on September 9, and that covered all of the schools. And did, actually was, I thought, pretty granular this year in terms of what it looked like, but are there any schools in particular that we want to take a closer look at, and the school principal comes and presents to us what their data was last year, what they're doing going forward? And I do think, and I keep coming back around to, you know, we're gonna have school performance framework scores coming out very, very soon. And I just really don't think that we're gonna be able to, like, I think that new things are gonna come up as soon as these framework scores come out, because if we do have a school that, for example, needs intensive support, well, what happened there? There's a thousand ways you can get to needs intensive support, and that could be because your scores, that could be because of federal designation, you know, there is another layer here that we're kind of missing. So I think that. So what we're talking about is, which schools do we wanna hear from?
I wanna hear from Metz.
Vice Chair Spall was first, and then Dr. Jones.
So for me, I'm not necessarily interested in just calling out certain schools, because I think that when there are celebrations and successes, I wanna know how they, how they can replicate that, you know, how did they celebrate that success, and how can they replicate it when a success occurs? So I'm looking at a more 30,000-foot view, where I've got, that I'd be happy to share, but, you know. Mine is like student achievement, climate and culture, programs and instructions, staff and professional development. And maybe that's more similar because of the way that we do things here, but, you know, family and community engagement, facilities and operations, celebrations and success stories, challenges and needs, and then looking ahead. So for me, like, it's a much more comprehensive, if we're gonna have them report, and under climate and culture, we can have attendance and chronic absenteeism. But I don't wanna just hear from the people that are struggling. I wanna hear from, you know, I want them to parade in the teacher that got, you know, 100% in geometry, like, that's a good time. I mean, I wanna, when we're telling, we're talking about telling our story, I wanna tell a complete story.
That's where I begin with. What is the ideal, what, what is the board's ideal outcome for this, that thing?
Right, so, so I, I, I can agree with you that if that, if, you know, if this is a framework that people are willing to look at or adopt, maybe it is more of, you know, just share a flyer, you know, but the flyer would be updated yearly, you know? So that everything that's new is, is on there. And. You know, I don't know.
I think if we figure out what is it that we want, then we can ask for it.
So we're doing.
Yeah.
I just wanna say, I think, I honestly think all, all schools should come to the school board to present. I don't think you just wanna come when your scores are low. And then there are also a lot of celebrations in all schools, even if their scores are low. I think when principals are preparing to present, it's labor intensive, and all of them are like, you know, what's going on? Is this gonna be good? Is this not gonna be bad? But I think we need to give strict, be very specific in what we want, because otherwise, one principal may be talking about, you know, I have these program, after-school programs, you know, I'm doing this, I'm doing this, and another school may show, oh, look at my new furniture. So it's not the same presentation. So I think we have to be very specific in what we want, but I think we would want them to share their celebrations, you know, what are they doing that's, that's new and different? Cuz sometimes even principals get other deals from other schools when they see, oh, they're doing that, let me try this. But I also think you wanna hear about their test scores, you know, what are the, you know, what's their vision for the future, but I do think all schools should participate, and we should be specific about what we wanna see.
Okay, let's, let's just do the schools now. A show of hands for all schools reporting.
I have a question.
Just carry the data?
Yeah, just logistically, and also from like a staff time point of view, like, is, what kind of, if, you know, if our, if all everybody is doing is spending time doing presentations, then, you know.
Well, Central Office will come up with a template, right? And they just.
Once you tell us what you want.
This is, this is what I have so far, and then we'll hear from Mrs. Miles. I have a school profile handout, something that we can hold on to.
It's a lot better on the website, if you look at the website.
And the school quality profile is there too.
But this is.
Sorry. Okay, jump in, Mrs. Spall.
Sorry, I mean, you know, areas where a school could use school board's support, you know, resources, policy alignment, funding, like, this is an opportunity to dive a little bit deeper, you know, with what, with what I have. It's got building updates, you know, all of this information is available to us, but it's not necessarily aggregated anywhere in its entirety, you know, and if you say, you know, when our international night is every year, and, you know, who has PEP, and, I mean, I think if it's, if it's uniform, it could do a lot of good.
Okay, so this is what I have. We wanna hear about school performance. We want attendance rates. We want all the scores, SOLs, vowels, whatever else. We wanna hear about their successes. We wanna hear how they're dealing with the needs for improvement. We want to hear about events, and if they're doing PEP, and if they're doing anything new and different.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'll, I can share.
Can I talk, please? We ran it a couple times ago. Um, if we could maybe focus on glows and grows, because if we focus on that, we will also highlight, like you said, the student's achievement, or we're also highlighting what those teachers did in the school too. And then also, we're also making our teachers look at, or our schools have some grows as well, like, hey, what do we know we need to improve on? And having them being more introspective, because like you said, it, it needs to be more than just a presentation, and needs to have a purpose behind it. Um, the other thing, and I'm, and I'm going back to what you said, um, at a school board meeting, about what are their needs? Like, what?
How does support, Mrs. Spall said now?
Needs of, of the school and the priorities of the school. Like, we're, we're discussing our priorities as school board members. Well, what does that administrator or that team say? This is what we see as priorities. And it also shows that they're aligned with us. Um, and maybe we can say, wow, we didn't know that was a priority of yours, you know? So we'll get some more information from them, I think, if we, if we focus on those things too.
Mrs. Breschak?
I still have a logistical question of how we fit nine schools into.
Three for our school for three meetings.
It's been done in the past.
Is there a timeframe we have to, to do it in? Like.
Well, it's just, it's just not very valuable if we're doing it in June, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah, cuz I know, like, for the city council, they, they have it, you know, written down, like.
It is gonna take up a lot of our meetings.
Yeah.
I just, I just don't know, I, I can't, and I'm speaking just because I've been on the other side of this. And as an administrator, I, I just wanna know what the purpose is. And I'm still, we're still not landing on the purpose. And a lot of the stuff that you guys are suggesting, um, the cabinet presents to us already as a whole. So perhaps taking some of your ideas for the close and growth, and we focus on one area, like, tell us about, under the student outcomes, tell us about your best practices that are giving you results. And ta-talk to us about academic excellence, what does that look like in your building? And see, I can, I can wrap my head around that, and I can even bring stories of my students and my teachers, and make it meaningful to you guys. But to just put all, like, all of the pieces for you, that's a lot of work for me as an administrator. I'm just gonna be honest.
Maybe have a scene?
Well, and this is.
And what am I getting back?
Mrs. Breschak?
So, our job as a school board, we're supposed to be the liaison to the community, and so a lot of this is us, is our community representatives, understanding just what's going on in the school. And get it, wrapping our heads around it. And I just think we're operating right now from an incomplete set of information, cuz we do not know which of our schools are with distinction, on track, off track, or need intensive support, because that information, I think, would alter the content of what we're asking for.
You wanna table this to another time?
I, I would agree with that.
Can't wait.
I think we can wait, but also, I don't think we need to ask any of the schools for anything that we can read on, on the website.
That's true, that's true. It needs to be stuff that we don't know, basically, or can't find ourselves. Yeah, agree.
We table it? Well, you have ideas, Dr. Newman, of some things that we want. Um, we'll wait till more of the information comes out, and then we'll and Central Office come up with a template that the admin can use, the principals can use to make it easier. Diana, do you have a comment?
Oh, I thought we were tabling it.
This is like for in the meantime.
Well, I mean, we might decide, like I said, we don't, we're operating from an incomplete set of, we might, we might, we might change, yeah, we might change course when things come out, so I think we should just. We all took our notes, and now it's on video, so we can go back and watch the video if we want.
Item E, election day.
Let's just tape.
Let's just tape off. Don't do anything until we have.
It's been a couple weeks.
The school board will discuss the impact of election day on the division, specifically whether schools should remain open on that day, and what operational or logistical implications that choice would have. And we do have information about what is already going on. We all have this. Many different professional development trainings that are being conducted. What are the thoughts?
I'd like to hear from Dr. Newman, what the main implications would be as far as equity and as far as financial, like, are there any implications that we need to consider before we even discuss this?
We do have three outside. Groups that are coming in to present that day, two of them we did pay for already.
Can we reschedule, or no? Is that a possibility?
Maybe would you reschedule?
Okay. Just no other case, I got it.
Heard it here. How fair is it if some people are in a course and other people aren't?
That's not fair at all.
It's not fair.
I think it has to be all or nothing.
Yeah, definitely all or nothing. Yeah, unless, unless those are.
Mrs. Spall?
There's a lot of training at two, some at 12. What are the expectations for nine to 12, or the start of the day till, till lunchtime?
We have to keep the schools open.
Plan in typically?
I mean, the classroom, classroom time.
Teachers have lots to do. I, I personally, and I'm just gonna put this out there, I'm very patriotic about my community service, and typically I have to take that day off from work, because it's something that, it's a value for my family, so I will advocate that if not this time around, that we, the calendar committee, whoever handles that, to consider using this day. However, we wanna do it, but given the teachers that day, so that they can also have that opportunity to go vote, to take their family, and it also alleviates, again, you know, as an administrator, and Dr. Jones may have experienced this, um, there is a lot of things that we have to do when they're voting, uh, during voting day. It's not just as easy as, you know, blocking an area, and assistant principals and principals are tasked with the supervision of all of that, to ensure that their teachers are good to go, all the, all the things that are happening that day, that bathrooms are accessible, security, oh, there's a lot that goes on, on this day, so. In all the districts, I have advocated for that day to be just an off day, however we wanna call it, I, you know, or label it, so that it means the calendar needs, but I, I.
You're talking about in the future.
Yes, not, 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 cuz I don't know if we're gonna be able to do it for this time around, but I'm saying the calendar committee should be looking into, I'm advocating that we keep that day sacred for families to go do their civic duty and vote.
Mrs. Breschak?
I mean, I personally have no problem with putting ID, any idea through the calendar committee in terms of how you strategically roll out and plan for professional development. Like, for me, in September, for this November, I mean, it's, it's, it's just a no. And when I am, when I listened to the request, and even when I'm listening to this discussion now, I'm not hearing the word students. Right, like, and if we're trying to keep students at the center, I mean, our students, our, you know, our, need our instructors to be performing at top capacity. Professional development is valuable and needed, and we've gone through the trouble of developing a professional development strategy to support those good student outcomes that we all hope to see, so it is something where, you know, maybe, and we shift things around in the future, like you're saying, maybe, you know, election day, you know, PD comes in on some other day, but if we're keeping students at the center, there is no way, and I also am also very patriotic about my service on election day. I'm out there, I will be out there, I'm sure I'll see several of you out there on election day, but, you know, the original request was based on safety concerns, and I am just, as an elected official, a very patriotic person, and not willing to buy into any kind of narrative that it's unsafe to go to the polls or to our school building on election day.
I don't think that was what was said. However, we just landed on our priorities in student outcomes, and we have E, talent and workforce, workforce sustainability. So I think that falls right into that, and student outcomes is not just for students, it's umbrella, right? So, um, I did not read the request as that. I, um, I do know, again, as an administrator, that there are safety things that I need to look for when I have, um, the public coming in into a space that typically does not have that many visitors at one time. So I, so I understand the nuance of the request.
Ms. Spall?
Are any of these, um, professional learning online, or is it all in person? Okay, so only a few, but mostly in classroom, okay. Definitely looking forward. I know our neighbors, um, typically, I know Manassas Park usually has a virtual workday. They've in the past also done parented your conferences on that day, and also Prince William usually doesn't schedule RPVs on this day. It's more of a, you know, work in your classroom all day. You know, because people go to vote, or some people are gonna take off anyway, and then they end up not even being there. So maybe just looking forward, maybe we just should follow suit, or at least look at that.
Okay, may I have a show of hands to keep the calendar as it is this year, and to consider on the next go-round, which would be sometime during the school year next year, for the following two years for the calendar, future calendar, just as a consideration?
It's too short notice right now to change it.
And, and it's too much money that's been invested, too.
All right. Uh, our next item, item F, bullying prevention month. Everybody has a copy of the proposed proclamation. Is there any changes, or does anybody wanna add anything? Typically, we have, we would do a proclamation early in the month, and then later in the month, um, staff would present what efforts were taken. I don't know, would it be Ms. Jackson that does that? Oh, Ms. Jones, Ms. Jones. Dr. Jones, right?
Is it Dr.?
No, a different Dr. than, or Ms. Jones?
Steph Jones, it's a Ms. Jones.
Steph Jones, those will call Steph Jones.
I just have a question. Um, how are proclamations done? Because I know two months, like Hispanic Heritage Month, we didn't do a proclamation, and for Black History Month, we didn't do a proclamation. Is it just V S B A that brings these, or are these something?
I understand, we don't do every single one, but if you would like to see one, just bring it forward.
Okay. I was just wondering about that.
Anyone else?
Is it, is it part of the plan to hear about this, what the schools are doing that is continued?
If we're supposed to wear a certain color or something, can you let us know?
We did orange, right, isn't it orange?
We've done blue hats, we had knitted hats. Every student.
Yeah.
If we, just a caveat, like, if we're going to do proclamations, then we have to be inclusive for all, you know, not just Hispanics and African Americans, but there are several others. The board really needs to, uh, be. So the board really needs to be inclusive in that if that's what we're going to start doing.
I would, I would think that that would be good to be.
Is there a volunteer that would like to read the proclamation?
I can read the proclamation.
The next meeting?
October 14.
14.
Do we want to have it?
I miss you when you do it. We can work from the end.
Probably spotlight.
Are you gonna vote on the?
Can we have it on consent agenda?
The proclamation?
Yeah. And then is spotlight after?
Before.
It'll be read, then spotlight, and then voted in.
That's fine, that's good. All right. Item G, consideration of professional development for the board. Ms. Diana Brown will lead a discussion regarding a potential professional development opportunity for the board centered around the speed of trust.
So I know that we often talk about we need to build our trust and, or whether or not we trust each other or we should trust each other, but trust is an intentional, intentional action with specific behaviors attached to it. And working at the speed of trust is a book. So I'm, I was proposing that at the very least, we adopt a book study together because the faster way, the fastest way for us to build our rapport and work more effectively is to build that, to take advantage of that speed of trust and really focus on those intentional behaviors. So I do have some handouts that I can give you. I think I share with you Chair.
Board docs?
Yeah, I share the official proposal from the company that runs the program. I did it in a three-hour session. I have the book. So it, I'm gonna, am I allowed to share the handouts? I wasn't.
It's on board docs, isn't it? Everything that you have, you email, I add.
And so, so that you guys can get, go ahead and pass it on. You guys can get, it, it could be a one day, they can do a one-day training, they can do, they can give us, we can buy a pass so that we can do a synchronous learning together and have discussions together. It's up to us. It is, this could be as expensive as buying seven copies of a book or really investing in ourselves to, to grow together. And the most important part of this is that even if the board changes, the people that remain behind are well-versed in the speed of trust and the behaviors and the intentions and it will be an easier turnaround with the new board members to get them to, you know, be at the same speed of trust. So I think it's, it's something that it might be beneficial for us. So I just brought it to you guys for consideration.
And what is the outcome you'd prefer?
I would, I would like us to at the very least, read the book together. I want to, I want to build our, I want to build our level of trust. I think that is going to be, to bring the best results as a board. And we take two steps forwards and three steps back sometimes, but I think it's because we're not aware of the behaviors or the intentions and this book really spells it out in a very simplistic way. And it's, it's on your own, but it's also a collective and it brings, it kind of bridges that accountability piece.
Mrs. Breschel?
So when we say read the book together, what's is that, what's that together part? Like we all just get seven copies and like, I don't.
And we have discussions.
Because I know that there's a, but like in what context?
Yeah, and we can. And our work sessions, we can take five, 10 minutes to discuss whatever we have. And I have different ways of doing it very quickly.
Do we do like a chapter and then after a work session, the next portion? That to me would be easier, like you have like two weeks to read this chapter and then you talk about it.
Well, the general.
They're very, very, very.
They can come and give us the whole one-day session, a three-hour session.
Did everybody read the proposal? It was included?
It was expensive, I think it's four thousand, it was four thousand dollars. But that includes, I did, did not, I did do the numbers for up to 30 people it doesn't matter how many people you have for that amount of money. And so that would give the superintendent a little bit of leeway if he wanted to include his cabinet or some principals and assistant principals in speed of trust training. So that, that price tag, it could be for up to 30 people or more.
Mrs. Spoh?
So I'd be more than happy to read the book. I mean, a lot of what I think, this, some of this building trust and like you said, you know, it could stay with us after, even after this board was here. It did happen with master board training and we did try to continue master board training. And so I don't know that I'm ready to totally switch gears at this point in time because we weren't in, in the end, able to, to make that training happen. But I am more than willing to read the book.
And I can make it very simple and very easy, like painless, like I swear, painless.
Well, and we've, we've had the Fierce training before, but that didn't seem to help. It's, the thing is, is if we're gonna go into any board development training, we all need to be on board, all of us. And we all need to commit the time and, you know, I, I don't know if, I, I like board development, I would read the book too. I don't think we can commit staff to doing this because they're already doing development through Fierce and through DISC and all that.
I, I, and I hear what you said, Chair, and I agree, we, we have done that. But I believe that this will give us the, I guess, the elevation that we need because this addresses specific behaviors, personal behaviors, things that we are doing that we may not think are intentional will, you know, strip us of our trust and, you know, the confidence that we are putting on each other. So I think it's just gonna bring awareness about the specific behaviors behind building trust and the things that we do to rob ourselves from that.
I would just ask at least two weeks to read a chapter from myself because that's all I have.
Mrs. Breschel?
Well, I'm just, so we've had various facilitated sessions, right? I'll read any book you give me. I'm a, I'm a big reader. I don't, it won't take me two, in two weeks, I'll probably finish the whole thing. I'm pretty fast. Not a problem, that's not a problem. My concern is that we have had previous attempts at professional development that were facilitated, that did not go well. And so to have the seven of us facilitate ourselves. Frankly, I'm concerned that it's, we're not setting ourselves up for success. I mean, I'll book club, I'll, I'll book club with anybody, but it's, you know, I don't want to stir up, I, you know, I don't, I don't know that this is, I just don't know. I'm a little concerned that we will, are not capable of facilitating ourselves and that this won't be success.
Dr. Jones?
Once again, I'll read the book. I don't have a problem reading the book. I don't think we need to spend additional money at this time. But to me, trust is value, is, you gave my trust by your actions. So will reading the book help that? I can't say, but I am, I'm willing to read the book.
Okay, show of hands, who would be willing to read the book? Okay, Alba, could you please?
I, I would say no.
Let's just read a little bit and see.
I just, I feel like the work sessions, we may need a mediator, kind of like what we did with VSBA, because I think with having an out, even if it's someone who isn't reading the book, but who can kind of like help us.
Can I just say, maybe we read the book and then we reconvene? Because, you know, we, we're already almost in October and we're gonna be planning for January. And maybe that's a time when, you know, we could try ourselves or maybe we can appropriate, you know, another person to try to help us, but we worked hard to get a January retreat. So like, let's start thinking about how we might be able to use that effectively, so.
Item H, Proposed Business Data Session Retreat on SOL Data. Ms. Diana Brown would like to discuss having a dedicated data session or retreat for the school board to review and unpack SOL data discussing its implications for goals and priorities.
All right, so my thinking is that, that it's critical that we as a board, the seven of us, take that one day or half a day to review this academic data together and not just relied on the description or what others are sharing with us. I think if we take that time to unpack what we see in, in, in a space together, we can be able to share our understanding and then take that collective ownership. Because I believe, I haven't been here but nine months, but I believe that if we expect our teachers to do that with their principals, if we expect our superintendent to do that with his cabinet, that we need to model the same and we need to engage directly with the evidence that is telling us how we're doing, where we, where we are and really, we need to be able to talk to each other about where we want to go together. So I think reviewing this data together also will give us a time to align our thinking and figure out if there are any gaps in our understanding or it may just bring about some ideas that we may not have considered that could actually improve the student outcomes priorities that we talked about. Because if not all of us are on the same line field with the understanding and with the, how we can use this information, then we're not gonna get where we want to go. We're not gonna get to that vision. And I have never belonged to a cohort of any type where I didn't sit with them and go over that information. So whether I was a teacher, whether I was an assistant principal, whether I was in another board, there was always time for us to come together to share our understanding. And I know this is kind of wonky and it's my first time in governance, but I just think that just having others interpret what the data means is unacceptable to me. We need to interpret what it means to us by looking at it and by sharing our collective understanding of it.
I.
Mrs. Breschel? I'm sorry, I'm just gonna point out the irony of having a trust conversation back to back with a insinuation that we cannot trust the, the, you know, the presentation that we were given, which by the way, matches the school quality profile, like, you know. So it is, so I just, I just wanna, I just wanna point, I just wanna point that out. Like this is, there is a rich irony there. And we had a meeting on the data and I shared my thoughts. Everyone had a chance to do that. And I am, you know, I'm a, you know, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a researcher, I'm a digger. I'm happy to go as deep as you want to go. But the intent of this is important to me and I am gonna bristle at the implication that we're being misled or miss or, or anything amiss is happening here, like, so it makes me hesitant to agree on that.
I wouldn't, you know, we're here as a team, we're here as a governance team and we have a, a bigger team and we have a whole family of Manassas City Public Schools employees. We have to be going in the same direction. If we, you know, took the data aside and just kind of brainstorm it, we might be missing a lot. But that's why we rely on staff to present the data to us, which is accurate. And the opportunities to consider data, that, you know, we have to think about our role as a school board member. And some of the times we'll be doing this is, well, the September 9th meeting. You can do whatever you want independently and come back with questions. In the school presentations to the school board throughout the year, it sounds like we'll be getting this data and be discussing the data and it will be the leaders of the schools telling us how they're addressing it. That's what we want to hear. Our October work session, we will be considering the data as we set goals for the superintendent. Our mini-retreat in January, we may be considering the data again. The superintendent's mid-year evaluation and the superintendent's end of year evaluation. Those are all times where we consider the data. Ms. Spoh?
I do agree with Ms. Brown in some aspects that having it presented to us and that be the only time that we talk about it as a board, in my mind.
I just read a whole.
I mean, since then, that, that was, we're gonna talk about it more, but I think that, because some of even the things that I'm saying tonight is because of some of the data questions I have. I think maybe just a recap of the data, like, like, we had our board meeting, they presented it and then having a meeting after that where, that is focused just on that. It doesn't have to be a whole day, but just where we just talk about it. If we have questions, just in conversation that we want to kind of bring up amongst ourselves to kind of grapple with, okay, why this, why that? And some of the players that presented it to us can be there as well to answer questions that maybe we obviously can't answer ourselves would be beneficial. I see the benefit from it, because I know as even an educator, at the end of the year, we talk about data or data and we look at it piece by piece, we, we talk about it as a grade level, then we talk about it with the administrator, then we talk. And we, we have multiple opportunities besides what you're, because you're talking about superintendent's goals, but the data specific to that, I think it's important when it's fresh in our minds so that if we have any questions or we want to see other pieces to make us understand why this or that, it would be beneficial. And I don't think that it would not be a beneficial moment to do, so.
Right, and I think we're gonna get another, by the way, when the school performance framework comes out, we are getting another presentation that incorporate, on October 14th, we're getting another data presentation, if you will. And then after that, we're convening again to see what, and traditionally, it has been organized by school. Like let's hear from, you know, a certain subset of schools. I mean, if we want to do something different and say, I want a deep dive reading across all the division, you know, we could do that too. We can do whatever we want in terms of our next, you know, whatever our, our next subset of presentations are. And I'm totally fine to do that as long as our trusted experts are in the room.
Of course, yeah, and, and I agree that they need to be here, because there's obviously questions that they, we can't answer and we may have questions that we can ask them. But the October 14th, I, I realize they're presenting to us during our televised, which these are televised now too, but outside the work session. And I think that it's hard to come up with all the questions that you want to ask during those times. These are a little bit more laid back and I feel like maybe them presenting to us during a work session would be better for us as opposed to in that fashion. But that, I know that that, that's just the way we've always done it, but.
Well, the public needs to see it too.
And the public would see it because these are, they're televised, but I just think that we just use this time a little bit. It's a little longer, you know, we have a little bit more time to kind of like comb through things. That's just a situation.
Thank you for the feedback. And Sarah, under number, the recreating transparency. I have to declare my intent to you, this was not to rob anybody of trust, so, but you can, you know, just try to refrain from blaming. The reason why we need to sit together as a board and review this data is because everybody else has done so. And they have been able to talk among themselves about what exactly concerns them. We haven't had that opportunity. You may have brought up some things that concern you. I may have brought some issues that concern me. But together, we haven't really looked at this data and say, hey, this is concerning for us as a board. Also, I'm not hearing anybody in their feedback telling me what do the data trends demand of us as a board as next step? And how do we want to lead differently going forward based on what we see? And how do we want to lead differently going forward based on what we see and what we have interpreted? So that's the reason why data talks are really important at all levels, and we are at the top of this. And if we are not able to reflect together as a board, then I'm afraid that we're not gonna be growing. Because today, if I pose this to you all, why do the data trends demand of us as a board? Are you, are you gonna be able to answer me? Because I'm trying to figure it out. And again, I'm coming from a place in my intention, again, I'm new at governance, and I wanna do this job well. But I wanna know what this demands of me as a board and how I want to lead differently. Because of four years from now, I will not be sitting here with the same results. I don't want to be here with the same results. And so I've been going back and just checking on all the trends and making the connections myself. But as a board, should we be doing that together? And so that, that was the reason why I wanted to bring it, not because I don't trust what's being interpreted for me. I think part of one of the, I did like a little agenda piece was to begin with the presentation from the academic, the academic data that we received. And begin to talk, you know, groups or pairs or as a whole, what that meant to us, what did we see, what did we hear.
But that's what staff is doing. That's what staff is doing and presenting to us. And we have the opportunity, you can ask any question you want at the school board meeting.
But as a board, what does that mean for you? And you're my chair, so how did, how did the data trends for the past four years and this year demand that we react as a board? And how do we want to lead differently?
Well, one thing, one reaction. I mean, that's why we're looking at this data and deciding what we want from the school's presentation.
I was just gonna, if you said in pairs, if you you guys will have to decide what you wanna do. The two-on-one meetings could be a start. If you said pairs.
And excluding the other five, I, I think that this, I, I thank you for that feedback, I do welcome that. But that's again, separate. That's a separate, that's separate, not collective.
I understand that, and I understand the overall, what you're trying to get, but what you just said, we could start off in pairs, I was just throwing that out.
In the retreat day, we can, we can do pair and we can do whole group during the retreat day or the half a day.
So I take that.
It's okay if the, it's okay if the board doesn't wanna do it. I, I just, it was important for us. Again, I wanna reiterate that I never belonged to a cohort that did not want to have data talks or reflections. I even have data talks with my students to set goals. So it is as basic as that. So for me, it just doesn't, I don't understand. But I'm willing to accept, you know, the will of the board if you guys don't want to have this conversation.
Dr. Jones had her hand up for quite a while, and then Ms. Brezha.
Okay, I can understand you want a deeper dive. And I think in the, in the school board meeting, there are probably over thirty questions. And so it's kinda hard to remember the answers to all those thirty questions. So I can understand you wanting the board to come together and further analyze the scores. And, and also when we eventually hear about the performance levels and all these other things, how do we put that in context about what do we need to do? And we should be thinking about what we need to do, not always waiting for someone else to tell us what we need to do, but we should have some ideas about what we need to do as far as test scores. So I mean, I can see your thought, just to, for us to further talk about it, just to analyze more and to dig deeper, once we do get the result. And like I said, there were lots of questions, and I don't even think all the questions were asked, because we would've been there a long time. I mean, I, I sat beside my fellow school, she had lots of questions, and she definitely did not ask all her questions, not picking on you. But I think even some questions weren't asked because of time limits and them strikes. So I think, yeah, this round just wants a deeper dive.
Okay, Mrs. Brezha and I will pose the question.
Right. Well, this is, I think we are kind of losing track of what we're talking about, cuz it's kind of evolving even right here on the table as we're talking about it. Like if we want to have a work session where we get a, you know, where we get to revisit the, all that data and we all talk together with the people who are, who were presenting it before and who are in the best position to help us through that and have that discussion, I'm, you know, I am fine with that, although I do have a degree of frustr, I was frustrated, and I will express a degree of frustration that, you know, on the meeting on September 9th, that there were multiple board members who said, I have questions, but I'm not gonna ask them. And I'm looking around like this, why not? This is the meeting of the school board. Like, ask them. Ask them, like this is, you know, and maybe we should all make a mental note, next year order dinner ahead of the data presentation time, so we can all get comfortable, but I, you know, I want to economize our time. We already spend so much time together, as much as I enjoy it. And if we feel the need to do it this year, for whatever reason, I just would hope that we could find a way, I don't think anyone is saying no to data talks. I, I, I heard that come out, and that's not the position I'm representing at all. Yes, data talks. Yes, on September 9th. Yes, on October 14th, when the School Performance Framework comes out. Yes, after that, when we decide what our deeper dives are, which have historically been school-based, but might be something else. You know, we might decide to ask for a different presentation. We might decide to ask for a work session at that time. So.
Mrs. Ball?
Yeah, I just, I don't want the conversation to end without just noting that, you know, where Member Brown said, four years from now, you know, I won't allow us to be in this position. And there were a lot of things that took place before you got here to make you, to make everyone feel welcome, feel included. I mean, a lot of effort went into making a third day for board development training. I mean, there were a lot of things that we wanted to do to have, to situate ourselves to be in a better position right now that did not go according to plan. So, I mean, I'm more than happy to make a new plan. But I don't want it to be completely overlooked that efforts were made. And, you know, it, it didn't go the way that we wanted it to, but that doesn't mean that no one recognized that there were new people coming, or no one recognized that, you know, that we needed to have further deep dives into a number of topics. And, and some of those could've evolved through master board training into a lot of different things that we wanted, including, you know, diving into data, which I'm not opposed to. It's just, it does feel a little frustrating because trust is an issue, and I'm welcome and happy to delve into that and to, you know, to make things better starting now, today. But we've had some roadblocks, so, and, and some of them I think were avoidable. So I'd like to make today a new day. But I don't want there to be an assumption that there wasn't an effort made to avoid some of this.
I'm not even aware, I, I don't even know what, I, I'm not making the connection that you're making, so I apologize for that. This is as simple as it was expressed. I just believe that as a cohort, we need to meet and talk to each other about what concerns us about the data, stated, and what does it demand of us? And how is it gonna help us lead differently so we get better student outcomes? That's it. No blaming, no other expectation other than together we're better. And I think I just want that in regards to this, because we just said that student outcomes and excellence is our priority. So we take time to do all kinds of things for retreat, and so I just thought this was important. But I'm not willing to take more time after this, if, if it's not something that.
All right, Mrs. Brezha, and then I will call the question.
So I'm going to ask, since we do have another presentation coming up on October 14th with the School Performance Framework, and we are reopening the discussion anyway about the, you know, additional presentation format is the best outcome for this item? Just to wait until we go, until we digest all of that?
I think that we should probably still see if we even wanna do the work session, right?
May I have a show of hands? To have a dedicated data session or retreat for the school board to review and unpack SOL data. Show of hands.
What does that mean?
Yeah, is it a data, is it a work session or a retreat?
So one or the other, right? We're not having any other retreats. No.
So maybe a work session.
A work session. Let's do work session. Just another time, yeah, work session.
A work session is fine.
I mean, when would we get to it?
A data work session, what would the timing of this be?
After the October 14th?
Yeah.
Right, well, we have to revisit this anyway, so why don't we just revisit it when, you know, when we have all the data, cuz it's also a weird year. Usually it comes out at the same time. So we're doing this, and we're kinda limping along and making this up as we go, so.
After the October 23rd, cuz I think that is already taken. So after October 23rd, when would that be? Beginning of November.
Do the 29th? The 27th, 28th, uh, 28th, we have a meeting. Where you say something?
We're here on the 23rd anyway. The Golden City is about hour, hour and a half.
We're not gonna be, two of us are not gonna be here on the 23rd.
Oh, yeah, then I And I wanna make sure Lisa gets ample notice.
You wanna do it in, as part of the mini-retreat?
Yes. Retreat's in January.
Yeah.
That's too far. No, I, I would say November, early November. Yeah.
Okay, can we throw out some dates?
Do we have a work session already scheduled anyways in November, right?
We do not, no.
Oh, I thought you had.
We have a lot going on in November. We have one school board meeting.
Which is that fifth?
Yeah, the fifth of November, and then we've got joint meeting on the sixth.
Joint meetings on the sixth?
Do we have any news about hearings?
Legislative breakfast. Okay.
But we have October 9th for now.
October 9th? For hearings? Okay, can you, in the coming days, talk with, huh?
I mean, the data would come out
Uh, the 9th is before, 8th, yeah.
You just wouldn't have it presented to us.
Yeah, we should wait.
Yeah, that's gonna be presented to us on the meeting, right? The meeting?
I mean, there's nothing, God bless it, there's nothing on my calendar for the 16th.
Of what? October?
Which is what I like, that if we
Yeah, I can do on 16th.
It's not here on the 16th.
I'm not here on the 16th. I'm away from the 15th and 23rd.
25th? About the 28th. Do we have a meeting on the 28th?
The 30th?
About November 6th after the legislative breakfast.
Well, that would be at like 10:30 in the morning?
Yeah.
So you need to take the whole day? You were able to take the whole day?
Dr. Jones, are you here on the November 6th?
If nobody has stripped, we're like, no.
There's a, an airport job fair. We can have time before it starts, just that we
What are the hours?
9:30 to 12:30. But our legislative breakfast is gonna be
8:30 to 10:30?
Well, can we, we can do, can, can we do the work session at 5 on that day?
Yeah, would that be a, do the 5?
Or we can do it at 1, 1, 2, 3?
5 is fine, 5 is fine.
Is the legislative breakfast, is like the one we did before?
At the museum?
I mean, I'm gonna, it's easier and cheaper for me to only pay for one block of childcare.
Yeah, yeah.
So if I am doing
I mean, 12 o'clock is fine, 11:30 probably would be fine. You do it 11.
Why can't we do it right after the breakfast?
She needs to go to a job.
Airport job fair for CTE. I mean, it's a big deal what they're putting on.
I know.
And aviation academy is
We're missing Baldwin intermediate, it's back to school night right now.
Noon here, noon here.
10:30 is fine, and I can start lunch.
Yeah, I don't, I have to take the whole
Noon here, so lunch on 6th. Does that work?
We have stop time.
Sure.
Yes, that'd be great.
I would have to
Well, I mean, I just wanna confirm if it's before school lets out.
Okay.
Because that's a huge deal for me.
You said 12?
Legislative breakfast is gonna be at the museum.
Yeah, I can't
Typically it's over around 10:30. So if we have that work session here at noon, then it gives us the time to get here and also, you know, I can provide lunch.
Yeah, I just can't take that whole day, so I need to go at one or the other, which would you, right?
You can't take the whole day?
I can't take that whole day, no. I can do the, cuz we already have two days we're taking for, in November. Yeah, but I can do, I just won't be at the legislative breakfast. I went to the last one. Is it, do we all need to be there?
We need to have forum.
How about that Friday on the 7th?
I'll stay late on Friday.
This is, that's a staff holiday.
The Senate? Isn't it?
Don't her holidays.
And then, and then again, you know, that, that, if we just do a work session on that day.
On the 6th.
On the 6th.
And that way I can just take a half day.
And or
I can do 10:30.
Or the, the 30th, do we, do we have, are we close on the 30th?
We have a joint meeting on October 30th at 5.
It's still before, November 6th is still bef, no, we're gonna need that in October, nevermind.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then the 6th at 5. Isn't that good for you, Dana?
No, I can do 6th at 5. It's fine. Can we do the 6th of, oh, no, we can't do that.
Can we do 10:30?
I can do, I can do
How long do you think it's?
It's hard for Dana, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I don't wanna cause hardship.
I'm sorry.
I can do 5 PM, whatever. I can do 5 PM.
You sure?
I mean, it's just money, what?
Yeah, I mean, if that's okay, but if, if that doesn't work for you guys, I don't wanna
It's hardship for everybody, I understand, so it's, it's a big request, so.
Is November 13th not a work session?
Uh, possibly hearing.
Okay. I do have that down.
13th?
So just schedule it now for a work session and not hearings, and then we won't schedule hearings on 13th.
Okay, I can do that, yeah.
You get to go to your airport, you don't get to pay extra for childcare, and you get to go.
Yes, thank, and I can still go to the legislative.
Luckily, there aren't some kids that we're delaying by having, not having hearings.
That would be tragic.
So we'll have to reschedule hearings date if we, if we have any.
And the kids are afraid.
Oh, there is a Gov. School meeting on November 13th, 2nd, 8th.
What kind of meeting?
I mean, there's, the Gov. School has a What kind of school meeting?
Let's just do, let's just do November 6th, that's fine.
Oh, you are supposed to go.
I'm gonna schedule Just do November 6th, that's fine. I'm gonna schedule a doctor's appointment that day. It'll just be okay.
Our meetings are
I'll write you doctor's
If we started at
5, early?
5 or
We've done two hours.
Two hours, okay.
You know, we'll just do the meeting.
Sure, we can do November 6th, it's okay, cuz I, seems like everybody else is, works for everyone. It's okay.
Where do we land, people?
November 6th is fine.
November 6th?
I don't want her to have to rush. I don't like that. We're doing it at noon though, right? You said noon.
I'm, I'll make whatever work.
Yeah, November 6th at noon, that's what we're doing. I have it in my calendar, it's ready to go.
November 6th at noon, okay.
You good with that?
All right.
The 6th at noon.
Rush. I hate being rushed.
Yes, legislative breakfast typically is over 10:30, then up here is the second.
Great.
Yep.
And we're up by 3:15, so I can pick up children.
Great.
On the 6th.
All right, moving ahead, item nine. Student Outcomes Board Updates Calendar. Ms. Brezha?
Great. So if you guys recall from our retreat, oh wait, hold on, I just didn't wanna say. Student Outcome Updates Calendar. Does it have to do with student outcomes? Yes. It is significant because we had decided that we wanted to focus more on student outcomes, get more presentations that had to do with student outcomes. But the presentations have not moved forward because apparently clarification is required in terms of what we were asking for. So my ideal outcome So, my ideal outcome is that we clear that up and we can start either following this calendar or discarding this calendar and get, bringing peace into the land, so. So, what is our, so what officially is our feedback? Because I liked, the, what I, what I recall from our retreat, what I recall saying was that I liked this, but what I wanted was a, you know, that also in September, we would include something like, you know, the SOL assessment data, like, all of the scheduled.
Bully and prevention.
Right, you know, whatever. Not just, uh, because these are kind of new, you know, you guys were, went through all of the academic subjects and broke them up into different ways we could see, see them, which is good, but, and so I like, I like this. But also wanted to see added to it, what are, what we were already doing. And I don't know if that's clear or not, or if people disagree with me and want something else, but I wanted to bring it back up.
I do remember this, that we wanted to be proactive. And I do remember this discussion. And there were specific things that some other members wanted, so I don't know if they've been captured here.
Mrs. Spoh?
I think it's a good start, I haven't really, I've been having to put together like my own idea of what the presentations were gonna be, just by rote memorization year after year, so. Um, there's nothing on there that I can see off the top of my head that I wanna see, but I think we can add to this. That happened year over year, though we do know. I agree with SOL, you know.
Right, like, yeah, we know, we know every Sept, you know, every September, we get the SOL presentation, you know, every, uh.
Every October, we may, may not get, you know, accreditation files, I don't know.
You know, in the winter, we get attendance, you know, mid-year attendance report, you know, whatever, you have the things that we get, just kind of regularly get it added to.
Have we opened it, opened it up to the cabinet to see if they find any relevant information that we may have missed in here that they already are doing?
Well, we, we made that.
Oh, you made this.
Sorry, if, that is, that does not have anything of your input from the retreat. That was just what we presented at the retreat.
So, we could add or delete things if we wanted to.
We did get the, the P D and the, um, H R stuff in September, right?
The update.
I thought that was great.
So, are we gonna continue to build on this, or what do you guys want? What do you want, Sarah? You brought it forward.
Well.
So.
Yeah.
What is your outlook?
I, I want clarity, uh, I mean, I wanna receive these presentations, like, yeah, I wanna receive these presentations, I think world language CTE would be great updates to get in October. That literacy would be great in January, math would be great in March, and all, like, all of that, just in terms of us from like a, and maybe this is something, and Lisa's not even here, but I have been procrastinating our board development, reconvening on the handbook, so maybe we just leave this the way it is, you guys, uh, did a great job, good job cabinet, proceed with your presentations, and we ourselves will work on, because I think part of it was what new board members can expect the year to look like.
Yeah.
And so, we will develop on our end what new board members can expect the year to look like and add things like, you know, October goal setting and mid-year review to, you know, all that other kind of stuff.
We'll move to, from September. Do a different one.
Yeah, I see a couple things that are missing, like, I know we did a, a sped data, we got a data from, I forget his last name, the one gentleman, yes, and Masiak, and we also got, um, information for Mr. Emel too, so like, I think that should be added, because they gave us presentation. Yeah, and I think that was like in May, wasn't it?
No, this was just from, we were having our board development meeting, Mr. Jordan made this recommendation that we go for specific content areas. Not so much the, like, the H R and the ethos.
Okay.
Just.
Okay.
But we can do what we want, Mr. Jordan just makes recommendations.
Right.
Do.
Right. I, I, you know, I. So, this isn't the whole calendar?
Right, it's not the whole calendar, this is, this is just the.
Working documents.
Academic, uh.
But you didn't put in, you didn't put in like, uh, uh, Mr. Emel, you didn't.
We can do those separate from this.
I see, okay.
You will still get Mr. Masiak, Mr. Mino, M Ola. Katie, Ms. Fishers, uh, H R.
It's just up there, got it.
That was just for content.
Okay.
So, should we review this, like, each work session and see what, you know, I mean, should we add it like in a working fashion, or?
So, part of this is we're kind of talking about two different documents with two different purposes, right, like, you guys put this together, like, okay, this is our academic content areas, and this is a schedule that you guys are gonna see it, and we as a board, I think, are thinking about maybe something separate, which is when you come on, you're elected to the school board, congratulations, and this is what your year is gonna look like, you know, you can expect your attendance updates here and here, you can expect your H R updates here and here, you can expect your we get access updates here and here, and we can, but we can do that.
But can't we just add it to this, so it's like a totally.
In a different color or something.
I mean, we just, we need our own box.
And, and based on the student outcomes and priorities, what do we want? Does this match priorities of what we want? Because it's a lot of, I remember, um, from January.
Sorry.
No, I just remember that comment from January, um, it was like informational dump and just lots and lots and lots of presentation without an anchor of purpose, like, why are we discussing this now, the, what is the relevance of it now, and why do you say that we as a board need to, um, act on? And so, I think when we first brought it, if I'm not mistaken, it was like the new people, we just wanted to know how we can be more efficient with this and not, again, overburden our staff to do all this informational dump. Just like the principals not having to report to us for the sake of presenting, but what is the purpose? What is the ideal purpose? Because I can read a, a presentation. So.
So, do you want this to be in board develop?
Well, I mean, we can, we can do whatever we like.
I mean, I think it's.
I, I asked about the calendar, and they, they told me they didn't have clarity, and so now we're all, and I just, I just, whatever it is.
Believe it as is, if that's what you guys want, I just don't know what the. I think we should look and see, are these topics we really want them to report to us on, or are they, are these beneficial? That's probably the, maybe the board development could do that.
The generation of it was, you know, was Mr. Jordan, who's not here to defend himself.
He didn't make anything his work today?
No, but it's, uh, but it was, um, you know, a suggestion to us in our governance training, that we try to spend more of our time on how, how the kids are, you know, student outcomes, how the kids are, what, what the kids are capable of doing. And, uh, covering each of our, uh, content, you know, and covering each of our content areas in the case of doing so, and, you know, if we don't see a value in it, then we don't, you know, then we don't, and we save everybody a bunch of, you know, time.
I see value in all those, yeah.
Yeah, I, I see value, but I just, I don't know, I think I need more details about the things that are on there, because some of them are, um, baked, like this deal of by literacy.
Fitness sports.
Yeah, the industry credentials, is that the CTE industry, like, the, okay, so maybe having like a synopsis of what it actually is, just to give us.
So, can we do this? Just for sake of time. We'll take this back to cabinet. Give some descriptions, bring it to the next work session, and redo the months that things would be. Because we still have to possibly schedule nine schools.
Right. Yeah, in the midst of those, yeah. That's true. To what end, people? To what end? Just so we have a preview of what the school, how the schools are doing. All right, I think it's a fact, this one.
The next work session, we'll revise this.
But you know, some of that, you see, like, fine arts, you go to plays, you go to art shows.
Right, and we support, and that's why, that's why I'm wondering, should we keep some of, all these things? But I can see the benefit of the community, because when they present to us, this is a school board meeting, it's right?
Yeah.
Uh, then the community gets to see and is, so, I, I can see why the presentation is gonna be relevant.
But I think maybe the time is enough.
I just, yeah. I, I just remember thinking that there were a lot of presentations and not enough time for us to take action on things that I thought were relevant to governance, so. I remember that discussion a little bit, but, you know, again, I was new, and I'm still new, and I just, I wanna focus on governance, and there was a lot of time being consumed by all these presentations, but.
Okay, so we're gonna come.
So, I just wanna clarify, you have what you, you are, you feel, okay, all right, I'm not gonna talk to you next week, and you're gonna be like, I don't know. Okay.
Moving back in another work session, board development committee is gonna consider putting in the handbook.
Cut it.
Okay, item J, special education updates and our special education audit. Mrs. Brezja will lead the discussion regarding special education updates. Special education audit.
Okay, so, following my fierce team, uh, graphic organizer here, yes, this has to do with student outcomes, specifically our special education student outcomes. Uh, it is significant because our special education student performance has lagged the state by double digits for quite a while now. And, uh, I, my ideal outcome is that we agree to, I, we agree that we either need a dedicated special ed presentation, because this is not a problem personally that I understand very well, like, what's actually going on here? And I did ask, you know, on September ninth, you know, what are we doing to address this, there was a long list of things that were given, but to me, that bullet list that was given as an answer to a question, you know, deserves its own attention. You know, so that is one potential outcome, the other potential outcome, and this is something I have discussed, you know, with you and Mr. Goodfeller in the past, if there are some kind of outside consultants that we might wanna engage to, to look at our special ed department, since we do seem to have spun our wheels on this for a little bit, um, which is apparently something you guys have discussed amongst yourselves in the past, so, those are, or we can do both of those things, so, that is my idea, I'd like to submit it.
Do it?
Both of the things.
All right.
That's an answer, good job.
We didn't, when the number of special ed kids that we had wasn't really same, like, ratio as some of our surrounding jurisdictions.
We were the highest in the state.
Yes. Um, so, I don't know if that's still the case or not, but, you know, I, I, if our caseload is much, much higher proportionally than other areas, is that still the case?
I have not looked at that.
I guess the audit.
That's good to look at, I guess.
I mean, because that, that was very, uh, I thought meaningful, when I heard that, but I do not know if that's still the case.
And when I say, but, I haven't, I didn't compare us to others.
I'm sure you worked with the numbers.
I have no doubt about that.
Okay, uh, item K, proposed business revision of the recess policy, Mrs. Brezja.
Technically, the wellness policy.
Yes.
So, does, so following our graphic organizer, I would like us to consider a restructure, maybe is the better term. Does this have to do with student outcomes? Honestly, no, but the reason why I think this is significant is this has come up every single year, I've been on the school board, and becomes a distraction to the other work that we do, when it keeps coming up over and over again. Uh, my concern is that our policy is not clear, and so families do not have a clear way of understanding what our expectations are for, um, what you are and are not allowed to do recess, and specifically, I'm talking about, um, you know, either taking recess away or having kids run laps or walk laps at recess. They are not supposed to do either of those things, but it does, and it has happened every single year that I've been on the board, you know, there's always some complaint that it is happening. And when I go and I have, you know, just even as myself, trying to look this up, like, okay, where's recess, where's recess, where's recess, well, it's under wellness, and wellness actually spends most of its time on nutrition. And so, I would like to, my ideal outcome is that this is referred to policy, and that we at least split it into two headers, like, one that is nutrition and one that is physical education and, and activity, so that the expectations are outlined a little bit more clearly about what you are, are not allowed to do with that recess time, and it can be more accessible.
Mr. Spoh?
Um, so, this is a problem that's been decades long. Um, and when I was on health advisory board, which is now called
Schools.
Yeah, Safe and Healthy Schools. Um, it was our directive to look at it, and we did put out, you know, messaging that said, you're not allowed to withhold recess, I mean, teachers withhold recess. I, I'd be happy to, you know, look at making it a policy, but, um.
For these regulations, though, is this defined in regulations? Is that something you would do, or we need to do, or?
Right, well, uh, I, I agree, it's not right to withhold recess.
Right, well, that, it is currently addressed in regulation, but there is, but it is a statute, and therefore could be policy that you cannot, um, assign a physical activity that may cause physical discomfort, as the statute said, which is what walking laps is, here, there's an actual statute on that.
But you have to prove that it's causing physical. It's a means.
And that, and it's statutorily that, you know, it's at least twenty minutes long and is unstructured, right? So, it could be a policy if we want it to be, because it is in the statute. Now, I am totally open to other suggestions in terms of how we make this problem stop popping up every single year and every single decade, you know, apparently, like, if, if this is not the solution, it's not the solution, then that's fine, but it, it does keep coming up, so.
I think we need to be specific, because I know even as a teacher, if it's not specific, you're in it, you're going to, to access it, especially if you have a very challenging class, and you feel that's the only way to be able to discipline your students, and you're not getting support, you know.
It is a tool.
It is, it's something, right, so if we're not specific, and we don't mention like laps, or we don't mention like a specific.
But it's not a legal tool, it's not legal to, you know, it violates a statute.
Right, what I'm saying, though, is I think if we're going to do it, we need to put like in parentheses, I E laps, I E, you know what I mean, like, that's, we should put that, because otherwise, if it's not in there, and this comes down to, you know, well, I didn't say that I couldn't do that, it only said discomfort, you know what I mean, you, you will get teachers that will walk around that.
Right, well, and I think that, walk around that, I see.
Yeah.
Laugh around it, maybe.
Yeah. I am for, because I've been in two different districts that did this, Virginia Beach and Fairfax, um, where we, they do a policy that states that recess may not be with help or disciplinary measures, so that's good, but I am not for that regulation and that, uh, micromanaging, because then we're, that, that's for the superintendent to make sure that his principals are you know, just going and applying the policy, so, um, because the laps, walking the laps does an example, but there are a thousand other examples, and that's where we fall into that little slippery slope when we start saying this, this, and that. Um, it's, it, teach, teachers can, kids can do, I, kids can do walks, they, and, and, I mean, we, it, this is a simple solution, and I don't know if it's a big problem, I know that you keep saying that you had reports, but, I mean, it is as simple as B E or teachers of grade levels having buckets of manipulative, you know, and different things that they can do during the recess, because you still have to keep it somehow structured and give the kids activities to do. And walking in bare skin's like doing that, and it, it does, I know what you're saying, if a parent believes that, but it could be just a simple redirection to that principal, to that student, it's not, I don't think it's a, a problem that's affecting all of our students, so I don't.
Ms. Struswell?
Yeah, I just want to clarify, I'm, I am against withholding recess, but I'm personally not against laps.
Well, I think, I do, so I was in a V S B A, like, law session where they said specifically, specifically, assigning laps in recess is illegal in the state of Virginia. Like, and that's, so that's coming from Stacy Haney's law firm who said that.
Well, you need to put that in a regulation, because I.
I stand corrected, if, if it's a law.
So, and that is, and that.
Lots of teachers.
Lots of teachers.
Love, and they love, a lot of the teachers love walking laps.
Well, and so this is, you know, this is the purpose, we go to things like V S B As, we sit in sessions and we learn something and, and bring it up, so.
The idea that forcing physical exertion, that's what it says, like, you can really look at what they say, like, walking laps or running or doing pushups, those kinds of things can be viewed as corporal punishment. But then the legal educational treaties and the court decision, they had to consider where walking laps is strenuous physical activity. So it's like the extreme, not walking, like, in pairs, like, they, they can walk if the kids want to walk laps. But, I mean, anything that you demand, like, we were recessed, but you didn't behave, so now you get to walk then lap. That is not acceptable. But if it's punitive, if it's punitive.
But I think we need to mention that, because there will be teachers who use it, and I mean, I will say, as a teacher, it was done with it.
Yeah, and this is something, we do have our own attorneys and we can get our, you know, Sarah goes to V S B A and here's something thing, like, you know, one of the outcomes is we could, and, you know, we kind of do our, a lot of school divisions have run their policies through their own attorneys anyway, so maybe this is just the conclusion is we ask our, you know, we all agree to ask our attorneys. You know, are teachers allowed to assign labs at recess and then that answer goes to the policy committee for further.
I want to hear from Dr. Newman, are the teachers assigning laps as recess a punitive? Is, is that a, a problem that is?
That has occurred.
That has occurred in the schools? And you dealt with, like, on a regular basis or what, is it isolated incidents? Is it pervasive?
At one school, it's happened more than some of the others. So we've had conversations with the principals, the principals had conversations. Staff, since our last conversation, we had not received that concern since then, but it has happened.
In one school?
It should have.
I hope there were consequences.
Okay, so we want to get our attorney's opinion.
On running laps that we, or assigned punitive laps at recess.
Rewrite the policy.
If necessary to.
And, and have the policy committee determine that. Also, when we do get to a more finished product, do we want to have the Safe and Healthy Schools Advisory review it? Just for stakeholder input? Because there's all kinds of, you know, medical and mental health professionals on that committee, along with parents and teachers and students, too. Does that satisfy your?
I'm satisfied.
Great. Alright, next item is the town hall. We're to discuss the town hall meeting held on September eleventh, including assistance provided, any follow-up actions, observations from the event, we have all had our notes to read and reflect on. And the assistance provided. Are we talking about the, um, translators and staff input?
I think it was the note takers, just.
Okay. Any follow-up actions? We've already talked about grading policy.
I think if we ever do another town hall, I don't think that you should be put in place of a moderator typically. When other electives are doing this, there is a neutral moderator, so that it doesn't occur where people want to get into a back and forth argument with any of us. And so it's, the moderator gets to look at the questions and then they get to redirect and time people, that kind of thing, and it, it leaves us to be in, in a neutral stance where we just respond.
Alright, any other notes?
I mean, I do think that we've, I think we micromanaged it a little much by like putting out the survey and putting out the topics and determining the breakout sessions ahead of time. Like, I think next time we should open up the funnel and just be like, it's a town hall and come, and what's on your mind? And maybe we choose to do moderator or not, but it is, because I think it kind of transform, you know, it, it kind of transformed the event from, you know, around, you, people were showing up for their issues. People were not showing up to discuss like a broad range of things with the, you know, that is generally school board, so that would be my feedback for next time.
Ms. Struswell?
So coming out of educational support, what we agreed was that we would share the aggregated data, some of which, you know, wasn't accurate, so it was shared by email, because, but, you know, we agreed, I think, this side of the table is educational support. It, it shouldn't probably have been called a town hall, but.
Agreed.
It was, you know, it was executed and the expectations were clear. People just, you know, kind of heard what they, what they wanted. There's also, or people made it be what they wanted it to be. So, you know, maybe the format didn't work, but there's also lots of discussion about how many people came out in general. You know, I mean, I think that the consensus of the, of the, of the committee was that that's probably not the way that, that we're being successful in, in getting feedback. Because we did provide people multiple opportunities.
Yeah.
I think that it was unfortunate that not a lot of staff members felt comfortable coming, because they felt as though their bosses are there. And so it's very hard when we have central office there to kind of be there if they want to share something. So I think that was really tough on the staff notion, but I think community-wide, of course, we had a football game that night, so that made it hard. But maybe we could think about doing, if we do call a town hall, not doing the survey and just letting people have it at different, you know, locations, at different times where people can come and share and let it be more like that, so that way it's not generated to just topics. Because I think that made it more sour, because it was generated towards topics, whereas it, if it was just open to people sharing or asking questions, that maybe it wouldn't have been as sour as, as it seemed. Let's say that.
I didn't think, and then you can talk, I didn't think that they used the Q and A. I didn't think it was very effective. I mean, everything that was said that night could have been done at a school board meeting with a presentation and citizens comment or public comment. So I wouldn't want to do that format again. Mrs. Spall?
I mean, I just think in terms of having teachers tell you that they, you know, didn't feel comfortable coming, that's part of the reason we did the survey first.
I had lots of teachers at our table.
It was, no, they, they had things they wanted to share and they didn't feel comfortable sharing, because their bosses are there. Like, central office is there and they were kind of scared to really be open and transparent, that's, that's what I mean by that. Like, that's what.
But if we're aggregating the data, I mean, they, if, if it was something that bubbled up, I mean, it would have, or it would have, if we had numbers behind something that people wanted to say, you know, the top number was twenty, twenty people.
Well, no, I mean, during the Q and A, like, they wanted to share, but they couldn't, didn't feel, because, yeah.
There's more comments than it was Q and A. Mrs. Brezha?
Right, so, I mean, there are just going to be people who are just not comfortable coming to the microphone, period, and the story, and especially at a publicly advertised event and public school board meeting and, you know, my goodness, the press was there and all this other kind of stuff, like, you know, there's a lot of people who are just not going to come and that's why, you know, we shouldn't, in terms of gathering our stakeholder feedback, put all of our eggs in a single basket, you know. Town hall is one of the things we can, we can do and town hall fits into the civic tradition of Manassas City, because the city council does them pretty regularly. So, you know, I'm supportive of town hall formats, because that is just, Manassas City residents are used to doing it and our other elected body does it, I think we should do it too. But, you know, if for anybody who's expressing any kind of anything, you know, we should have other avenues that we're constantly exploring for them to be able to, you know, for, you know, to, to, to be able to share things, and if that's like, you know, dedicated surveys on specific issues or a suggestion box or, or a survey that's not, a start-stop continue survey that's not connected to an event is just, you know, aggregated for our, you know, and presented to us as for our use and information, but I think there's going to be people who are just not going to come to a town hall, ever.
Ms. Brown, did you have your hand up?
I'm gonna hold my comments chair, because, but I do want to reiterate, so I know that we're being recorded and we've been watched. I don't agree that teachers didn't come, because they didn't feel comfortable. I think on the other side of that coin, our teachers and our community know that we have made ourselves available. They email us regularly. Dr. Newman sends multiple responses during a week with all the issues and topics. So I think that has a lot to do with it, that we on a regular basis are available to our teachers to ask, to answer any questions that they may have. And I, it might just be my perspective, but we're pretty responsive of that. So I, I, I want to, you know, just kind of encourage people to continue to do that, to continue to email us. We don't have office hours, but perhaps that would change. But we really do are responsive to our teachers and our community members. Really involve, most of you are out there in the community talking on a regular basis, just like I am, so I think that has, that may be the reason why we didn't see a big, big turnout like we wanted.
Mrs. Spall and Ms. Brown, at your, you were at the calendar table?
I was at Communication.
I was at the calendar table.
Oh, calendar table, were there any follow-up things on that? I think, I mean.
No, there were two teachers there and one parent who just wanted to observe, but both teachers have served on the calendar committee.
Okay.
They kind of do the process, but they were just concerned with the early start and the late finish, I think, were the main things and just some of the holidays, but I think they really wanted to end in May, instead of ending in June.
Yeah, and that isn't anything we haven't seen on the calendar survey. So the next time around, we'll reassess. Communication?
We had one parent and one parent who was also a staff member, who I think might have been our note taker, too. I'm not sure, we didn't really get that much into notes. The parent said that they, um, they felt like the event was well-publicized, you know, that they knew what the expectations were. There was a lot of discussion that evolved or devolved into just talking about why, why, why do people on social media, you know, just want to, for lack of a better word, you know, eat our own, like, nobody understands why people can't find, you know, the positive things. But, and, and then the one staff member said that they didn't really have social media, so they didn't understand that there was really a big problem. Bless our heart, so, you know.
Don't get it either.
There was plenty of staff there, lots of people to answer questions, we did have two teachers come over, you know, and kind of observe, but they, I mean, my recollection is that they felt like, you know, social media was a problem also. But, you know, all in all, the one parent had positive things to say.
Great. I know, Ms. Miles, we're going to be talking about your table a little bit later tonight, so. Anything left unsaid about town hall?
I had to be unsaid.
Okay. Next item is update on CREP, the Culture Responsive Educational Practices, and I'll go to Ms. Miles.
Yes. So I'm currently on the subcommittee of the CREP and so far, they have had five needed, meetings, excuse me. They are planning an event in the spring, Women's History Celebration and Career Fair. And this fall, they are hosting, we're hosting and advertising a shoe and sock drive. And each, I have some information about that. Each school will have a drop-off location and the community, students and families can drop off gently used adult-sized sneakers and boots, as well as new socks. And these donations will supplement what boxes of basics cannot provide. Admin, administrators in each building have been sent the information, which they created a flyer. And this information here is kind of old, because I had had only one meeting, so I kind of updated it with my notes, but that's from our first meeting. But we have a flyer already out and the donations will be collected between October sixth and the twenty-fourth. And they're, we're collaborating with each school's family liaison to provide all the materials, information, to make the collection process simple and successful. And they have asked the administrators to post at school or online the flyer that we gave and the family liaisons are in charge of finding a large box to collect the donations and have been told to keep the donation box near their school's front entrance. And we will be picking up the donations October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. And we created a sign-up genius for participants to sign up by indicating the size, gender and place to indicate where they're dropping it off. And there's going to be a, an online inventory, which is really cool. So that way, if a teacher or anyone says, oh, these students need shoes, they can go on that inventory, the family liaisons, and can see exactly who, which school has the shoes and the size, which I thought was really nice, and it's going to be called Walk the Talk Shoe Drive Inventory. Yeah, so I thought that was really nice. And as far as the Women's History Celebration and Career Fair, we're going to have more information about that, but we are kind of deciding how the career fair is going to go. So if you have any local businesses that you have partnerships with or you know really well, we're trying to get some of them to participate in that career fair. Maybe even women-owned businesses would be awesome, too, I think. But I can give you more information at the next, you know, when we have another meeting about that. Did anyone have any questions?
Can we bring the donations to you at the next meeting?
Sure, that's fine, yep, you can do that.
Ms. Miles, I was just going to say, this is a perfect thing to include in your school board member comments. Don't sit on a report like this.
Okay.
I mean, just include it in your comments.
Okay.
Because it is a committee that you're assigned to and this is good information to get out.
Yes.
Any other questions? Alright, we will move along.
Yes, I can send you the flyer as well, so you guys can have the flyer, yep.
Okay, next is teacher data analysis. Ms. Miles will lead the discussion on reviewing teacher data.
So my topic or priority is, I like to discuss, is requesting a data collection on the amount of teachers we have in each school. And when I say amount of teachers, just, I know we have participant teachers, we have I-teach teachers, we have tenured teachers, have been here for ten, you know, ten, twenty-plus years, and then we have some teachers who are new. So I know that, and that sometimes people look at the numbers in each school and that they may have an impact on our performance of our students or the S O L data results. And I know that's come up a few times, and it's been told that to me, that based on the experience of a teacher or the amount of experience that the teachers have in that school, that that may contribute to our scores, whether they're great or whether they have need improvement. And so I would like to get information to understand each school and what may have contributed to that success, so that we can, you know, kind of debunk to me in that narrative that based on the amount of experience or non-experience in a school determines the S O L scores. So, so I'm asking if, if I could just, if we could, and if that data is something that we don't want to, you know, share with the public, I don't know how that, how that works. If it has to be in a closed session, because you don't want to share that, I don't know, but I just think that it would be great for us, especially when we're looking at data, to kind of exit off or say, oh, maybe that is a reason, I don't know, so. But I can't, you can't make those determinations if you don't know that information, is what I mean. So my outcome is just to get the information, understand each school and what may have contributed to their success or lack of success.
And you want to identify it as participate teachers, I-teach teachers, seasoned teachers and new teachers?
Right, so just to show, like, and obviously no names included, just showing the data of in each school, you know, the amount that we have. I know that the rhetoric that I've heard is that, oh, well, maybe the reason why that school didn't. school didn't perform that way is because they have a lot of inexperienced teachers or maybe they have more of this. So just, just to kind of put that at rest. Um, and maybe that's something that we are showing at the next work session when we really talk about the data, that could be something to, um, as a, as a piece that we can kind of examine when we're thinking about next steps.
I'll answer questions.
Um, Dr. Newman, is this something that you guys look at regularly?
That our experience with our teachers.
Well, I mean, you know, we know, I know that you've said, uh, an I statement is that, you know, that there's definitely a correlation between people that use collaborative learning teams and people in teams, and schools that don't, teams that don't. Um, you know, when I see new teachers come, you know, they're fresh out of school, they've got new ideas, I mean, I don't know that, it seems like it could be a little bit arbitrary about, you know, planning outcomes just on tenure, but, um-
It's very disturbing that that conversation is being had, that our participate teachers and our I-teach teachers are a reason of what scores look like.
Yeah, I mean, that's not even really what I took from that, but if that's what, I mean-
I agree.
I, I, you know, what I've heard about participate teachers is that they're phenomenal. I mean, we, we want more, so I, I, I don't know about that, actually. I mean, I'm not trying to draw a conclusion, I'm just trying to say, are you guys watching it? I mean, because-
It, it's not our role to-
I don't, I don't know that it is our role. Um, there are, you know-
It's opinion-based.
Right, there are definitely more tenured teachers that aren't willing to adapt to what our, you know, our methodology is right now. And there are new teachers that would accept that, is that correct?
I don't, I don't think you should, that anyone should speak in that, that way, because there are veteran teachers that have dove deep into the CLT process. I don't wanna say there's a new teacher problem, there's a veteran teacher problem, we just need to look at the, the art of teaching and learning, and how we can improve that. The, the finger pointing is ridiculous. It's very sad, disappointing that that conversation would need to be had.
Dr. Jones?
It hasn't been had with me.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I think, I think, um, I think all the teachers work hard, and some scores are better than others, and some scores are better. I mean, you could be a teacher and have great scores one year and get a different group of students, have different scores the next year, and it's not that you're a bad teacher. But I, I, to me, we have principals in this, in the building for a reason. And the principals work hard with teachers who need assistance, their coworkers work hard with them, Mr. Goodfellow, Dr. Newman worked hard with them, there are many people in place to help any teachers who's having struggling with test scores, but I think that's, I think that's a principal's responsibility. I don't think that's the responsibility of the school board to say, oh, you, this school has this many teachers and this, this, this is why their scores are low. I, I don't think that's the school board's responsibility. I think we support the teachers and we support what they need, and Dr. Newman will let us know what that is, but I don't think we should, I don't think we need a, a list of what's, what teachers are at every school and start pointing fingers and this is why that's happening. I don't think we need that. And we have people, we're not their supervisors. Um, and I don't think we, I don't think that's information we need. I think we should offer support where we can give support and do what we can do for the teachers and the students, but I don't think that's information we need.
I will say turnover rates, you know, at schools might be higher than others, and we know this, um, and that does, does affect schools, I mean, and does affect student outcome. Um, I know if you have the same teacher over and over again that is excelling and you see them every year, you build those relationships, especially in the higher grades, so that does affect student outcome. I mean, that, we all know this. Um, and so I don't think that it's harmful to know. Um, I think it's just a bit of information to help us understand our schools better, to understand, um, the, the make of the school. Um, even like, we get information about principals who get hired, you know, just so that we know who they are and, um, you know, who has been hired. So I feel like it's not a harmful thing to do, but.
I think the request in itself, uh, was not harmful, however, the attachment to the, the premise that some people have said that this equals that, that because some schools have this number of teachers or because there's veterans versus inexperienced or, um, all of those pieces, that's a slippery slope that we just are not at liberty of taking because after we're through reviewing that, then it's going to be the next level. So it's because the number of students that look like this in that school and in that other school, and then it's, so it's, it, we will never get to the bottom of it. I think we need to focus again on figuring out our own reflection of that data. What does that mean to us? How can we be supportive of the superintendent? And making sure that we do have budget, make budget decisions to ensure that we hire competent people and are able to retain them so that they can continue to do the work, like the people who are currently in his cabinet, who are really working hard to improve teaching and learning. And actually, I'm gonna get on the sub-box, we all need to support principals and assistant principals so that they can be instructional leaders, so that they can go and deliver outcomes for us. We need to ensure how we're gonna lighten their plates so that they make that instructional leadership a priority, because they need to be working with our teachers. Um, even if we got the information and even if we can form, you know, opinions for one way or another, what then? We still have to go to, what can we do with those principals and assistant principals who are there supporting, and those coaches that we're training to work with our teachers? That, 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 that's our focus, I think. So data's great, and I don't want you to feel bad about asking for that, it's just that the premise, it can lead to a lot of, um, ill-formed opinions. You can move that continuous, um, story that we are less than because slippery slope, slippery slope, whatever, you can fill in a blank.
Can I have a show of hands on, uh, the school board receiving and reviewing teacher data as defined? Okay, thank you. Next item, community input on school start times. Ms. Miles?
Okay, um, so when I was at the town hall, there were a few community members, um, who issued concerns about the start times at the high school and the fact that it could be a contributing factor to tardies and absences. And the other fact was that the schools have switched at times in the past and my, which also can affect student attendance and achievement. Um, and so would we consider, um, looking at the times and see where we could decrease the start time in the elementary school, that they have later start times, and shorten the time in the high school to be more aligned with the intermediate schools or, uh, other high school times in the area, which is seven fifteen to seven twenty-five? Um, my ideal outcome would be a conversation about end and start times, maybe some options that we can offer the community, or a policy that allows us to review, um, the start times every five or 10 years, which that way it's not, it's something that's already a policy, they know this is what we will review it. And reviewing doesn't mean we change it, it's just we review it to see if it's something that we as a board feel needs to be changed or adjusted.
I thought during that town hall meeting, we had a significant, um, presentation on that and how much it will cost to-
It wasn't the same topic, though. It wasn't about, um, having them aligned, it was about having switched or earlier start times for high school. So, instead of having later, earlier ones, and then, yeah, so it was switching elementary and high school and-
So we can-
Oh, dear. Pretty bad.
The mic's picking up everything. We can get it. Mrs. Spall?
Um, so just a little bit of history, that's my recollection, doesn't, um, make it so, but I thought we did a lot of, um, analysis on our, when we changed our high school start time to make it later, on why it was most beneficial for, um, our kids. And it had a lot to do with, you know, how many kids were watching, and girl kids get on the bus, what have you. Um, that's just, just to orient everybody about what was done when the change happened because it used to be a different start time. Um, the other thing is that it was the will of the board, like, just a couple, one or two years ago, I think to let teachers move rather than have families, um, changing back and forth within five-year time spans. So, I mean, I don't know that, you know, that was necessarily my favorite outcome, but it was the, the, it was the will of the board to make, to let, to let those changes happen, um, on the staff side, not on the family side. So, I mean, I personally would support reviewing it every so often, I mean, I don't think that hurts anything. Um, but I, what, what it does hurt is continually promising staff that we might change it and when, you know, it wasn't really a will of the board to change it.
Right.
Um, so, I mean, that's, that's the only harm I can see in it. I don't personally have a problem with it, you know, um, but, but we're, when we do our facility study, there's an opportunity where we might look at, you know, even redistricting. I mean, there's a lot of things that could come down the pike that, um, you know, might necessitate just refiguring a lot of different things, but I think that you are giving people hope and then dashing that hope if there really isn't an intention to make a change. And that, that was frustrating for a lot of people, you know? So sticking with, that's the wisdom of the past board.
How much of a problem is it in the community? I mean, Dr. Newman, are you hearing a lot of, um, complaints from the community that this is a prevalent issue?
Well, I thought we were, I should have asked you what you meant by this topic. I thought we were back to putting the five elementary schools on the same schedule, but I, you were talking about something-
Yeah, but, well, they, they heard that, but then, um, the community members were mentioning the fact that the two were, the two that were late, um, yet, changing it to the high school time, like swapping it with them. So that, so that way, there's no bus issue, so then that, the high, um, but then that's too late, obviously, too late. So then the other thought was to switch the intermediate schedule, which is super, you know, a little earlier.
Swap them with the high school?
Yeah, with the high, with the high school, so that they have the earlier time, and then give that eight-thirty slot to the, to elementary school, so they're a little bit more aligned with other elementary schools.
I, I just wanna make sure that whatever we consider-
Yeah.
Like, it, because we are impacting, I know we, that, that town hall, it was eighteen people, maybe, I counted, and, and I think I, I included some staff members in there. This is families impacted, so-
Yeah.
We, we should not be thinking about a change based on one or two people's-
Yeah.
View.
Of course, and, and the thought was, okay-
Osborne.
So, uh, yes, the Osborne would be, so they hit it in the round for it later, that would be the Osborne, so they would switch that, and then this would be switched with that. So, so that way, this right here would be Osborne's time, the earlier time for that.
Intermediates would take the eight to five.
Would take forty-five, so they would get the little bit later. That way, you don't have to, because the money, obviously, no one wants, how much money on twenty-seven buses? It's just kind of swi- swapping them. But I, I agree that once we, if we were to change it, it needs to not be changed for like years.
It's a big deal.
That's huge.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot, and I know even as-
Everything will have to be changed in the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, and obviously, it can't be this year anyway.
And we have, we have nine school presentations I gotta-
Right, oh, my goodness.
Change the buses, too.
But no, I agree with, um, Ms. Brown about seeing if, and that's what I was saying, you know how we do the calendar, we give options, seeing if there's even, you know, put the option of what we have and see if everybody chooses that, and then put a second option, and if we, you know, and base it on the option. And then that way, we actually got community input, and it's not something that we just said, you have to do this, you know?
But if it's a problem, if it is a problem, because just one person affecting the rest of the two schools, you're affecting two schools.
Yeah.
Do you need that back?
Three, yeah, I'm sorry.
If you flip them.
Yeah.
If you flip them, yeah. Is it a problem that needs to?
Well, that's what I was saying, like, if you gave an option, it would be more of, give the option of what we have, you know?
I think you have to see if people even care about that.
Right.
Because you only had one, one person at your table.
There's a few, there was a few people that were talking about it, but-
Okay, Sarah's had her hand up.
Sorry, sorry.
Uh, I mean, I think that if this was a problem, we would, I mean, half of everybody here just finished knocking doors, you know what I mean? Like, if this was a, a really big problem, you would hear it over and over again. Um, second of all, it is a big, you know, one does not merely, one does not merely walk into Mordor, one does not merely change your start times, like, it's a pretty complicated undertaking. So I think that, yeah, I'm always open to, if it does, if it does turn out, like, if I do start to hear more, I'm gonna start knocking doors myself before, you know, before time, uh, too much time passes, but, you know, definitely, it's, it's like, it's not a never kind of thing, but I would like to see this year focused on, you know, our academics and our, uh, attendance and, and things like that. And I don't think, and if I thought, and if we had evidence that this was impacting our attendance, I think we would see that, I think we would know that already. Because at one point, adjustment was made to support attendance because elementary students weren't getting on the bus, they needed their earlier high school siblings to do it. And speaking from personal experience, there are a lot of high school, you know, between being a Baldwin parent, there are a lot of high school students that come over and get their younger siblings, and so that makes a perfectly intuitive sense to me, so I'm a, it's not an ever thing, but.
It's also for the city, I think it's a real rite of passage, once you've made it through the Baldwin and, and intermediate, the intermediate, like, years, and then you get to build back to Mets, and then, like, I mean, if you took other high schools, I would have been livid, absolutely livid.
So is there an appetite to revisit these times?
Okay.
Thank you for bringing it up, Ms. Miles.
It'll be there until it needs to be addressed.
Um, item P, update on meet and confer.
Um, I just, I know that we got, um, the email about meet and confer and more information.
Could you use your-
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, so I, I wanted an update on the meet and confer process, um, who will be the players at the table, and are we still planning on inviting MEA and the VP to the table to represent the union? Um, are we also planning on inviting members of the community such as PTO or PTA president? Or is this solely for staff? So, it was just, and I think that a lot of those questions were answered, but-
Is this topic a priority focused on student outcomes?
Yes, um, because it's important for us to know who serves our students each day and to understand, you know, what needs they, they have so they can serve them best. Um, and I just had the questions of how will we be informed of what is discussed? And will we be given notes after each meeting or be informed at the end of the four meetings?
Four after each?
Each meeting, okay. And will we have, um, a time to discuss it, like, our data, just maybe a quick discussion or will that be separate, like, from our work sessions?
The idea is to have these notes support the budget process, right? So that, um, and the set of recommendations that come out of meet and confer, we are receiving before our part of the, uh, budget process begins.
So it's about budget? I thought it was more about staff concern, yeah?
I mean, it's about everything, but like, we set the budget, they set things like, you know, who gets assigned the bus pickup line or whatever, you know, the, the other, um, workplace conditions, because not everything in workplace conditions is under our purview.
Okay, so there are some things that we won't be given information about, or are we gonna just get the raw notes?
The whole report.
Okay. And also then, are we planning on inviting every, like, who is gonna be invited besides the staff to the table?
Be invited from staff.
Okay, so, you know, PTO or anything, okay. Just wanted to clarify that. Sorry. Light's true. Sorry, yeah.
I, I just, when I read this, I, I thought we were getting an update on meet and confer, so I am looking forward to hearing how the first one went. But, I mean, I was leaving the house up to you guys, but I, I, I'm glad to see, you know, information just came out today, looks like it's getting ready to go. So, Godspeed, everyone, good luck to you.
Did that address all your questions?
Yes.
All right, item P, up, oh, no. Q, we made it to Q.
Oh, um. Yes, so I've contacted everyone independently. There is an opportunity on VSB A, possibly an opportunity to serve as Vice Chair of our region. So, everyone did, including Lisa, said that they were amenable to the idea, so it'll just go on consent agenda, and then the application will go in. And the main job, just to repeat for everyone, is, you know, to, to, I guess, act in, in the president or the chair's stead. Hopefully, that won't happen. And, you know, help, help with the regional meeting once a year. And then, the main thing is to organize an art show and find people who will be judges for that, for said art show.
She's in her vice chair, Erin. Congratulations.
Well, there's no congratulations yet, but thank you all for saying yes.
If we vote, we will vote.
You might be able to vote.
Yeah, we will vote in November. I think we vote in November at, at the conference. All right, there being, yes, ma'am?
Was that the next step? Sorry.
It is. Do we have a second? I have a motion by Mrs. Bresch, a second by Vice Chair Spall, that the school board meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six-zero.